I will start the meeting. Okay, we are all set. Thank you. So. So it's 7:01. I will open tonight's Lunenburg Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, January 12th, 2021 at 7:30 PM. With our revised agenda. So for those who are wondering, the only revision is the fact that we're not on Facebook Live. We're going to be on YouTube Live tonight. So in accordance with the requirements of the Open Meeting Law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 virus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the CDC, regarding the pandemic and steps communities can take to prevent its spread. All town facilities are open, but by appointment only. In accordance with the Governor's Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through the local access channel on YouTube Live and can be viewed at the following link youtube.com/c/luenenbergaccess/live. It will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel within 24 hours after the meeting has concluded. The following information is also provided for members of the public that would like to participate in the meeting remotely. If you have a smartphone, computer, or a tablet, and you have the Zoom application, you can use the Zoom application, and tonight's webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you would like to participate but don't have any of those smart devices and would like to use your phone, you can do so by dialing 888-475-4499, and again, entering the webinar ID of 909-174-0347. For those using the application, please familiarize yourself with the Raise Your Hand feature. That is how you will request permission to speak. And if you're using the phone, you will dial *9 to raise your hand. I will, the Chair will recognize people at the appropriate times and as best as possible in the order that hands were raised. The agenda list, all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and those that are reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the Open Meeting Law. So roll call vote for starting tonight's meeting in the order I see our board. Mr. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Marino.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Jeffries.
Here.
And here for myself, obviously. We also, Madam Town Manager, are you able to see and/or hear us?
I can.
Thank you. We can hear you. Okay, at this point, we will, after the meeting is called to order, we will go to Ms. Adams for the Pledge of Allegiance. Lead away.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment this evening from the, from the board? Ms. Adams.
I just had a couple. The first one, I know it is on our agenda to announce the Community Outreach Meeting for Marijuana. I'm blanking on the exact name of it, but I just wanted us to mention it on the front end of the meeting in case we lose people at the end. That is at February 4th. There is a meeting intended for the company that seeks to come do retail marijuana here, and they are obligated to give the community an opportunity to have a meeting where they answer questions. And so that is on February 4th, I think. I have that correctly. And I just wanted to mention that at the beginning. Another thing with meeting on the computer like this, we've lost some of our, I think our ceremony and routines. And it's always nice to welcome in new legislators, and lots of times people would come and visit Town Hall, say hello when there was a shift in leadership. And then oftentimes, there'd be a chance to thank folks that had served. And so I don't know if we have anything more formal planned, but I just wanted to personally thank Dean Tran for the time that he spent serving Lunenburg. I had, I think we had a lot of positive interactions and assistance from him. And, and like I said, I, I think it's hard without Town Hall to sort of appreciate some of the old traditions. And then my other comment tonight, there, you know, was a lot of information shared and spread from the school side of things regarding the events that took place in the Capitol. So I had, typically I just speak from my mind, but I'd written something, something down in regards to government that I just wanted to read. In whether town government or national politics, we all value democracy, from the nation's capital to the city streets and our own small town. I hope that everyone can walk the paths of peace and freedom. And the best way forward is not to see life as a series of divisions, but as a necessary whole. There's only one nation, and we must share it with each other. I think we're all a bit exhausted, no matter, you know, what, what side somebody may think from or come from. I always see it as, like I said, it's a necessary whole. It's almost meant to have differences. And so I think we're at a sad time, and hopefully what comes out of it is, is we realize we all need each other's opinions, and there's a space for everybody.
Thank you. I'll just comment on a few, a few things that are questions you, or things you raised. Yeah. Certainly not meeting in person, there's a lot of things that would be a lot easier to do. First, with the newly elected people coming in through the Town Manager, we are arranging a date for our delegation, which would be Senator Cronin and Representatives Kusmerik and Sina to come join us. I think that's in a couple of weeks. Is that true, Madam Town Manager?
I'm trying to coordinate for them to come next week.
Okay. So we'll be able to say hello for them. And yes, on, on two notes, I'd like to thank Senator Tran for his service. I'd also like to offer condolences because I know that a couple of days ago, his mother passed that he posted about. So certainly a, from, from the, if I may, from the board, I'd like to offer our condolences in, in hearing that news. As far as the, the upcoming cannabis community hearing, Madam Town Manager, is that part of your report?
Actually, I was gonna make that announcement under Public Announcements.
Okay, alright, great. Alright, so that will be on the front end of the meeting. To your last comment, I echo it wholeheartedly. We really need more semblances of order and peace more than anything, certainly. Differences are differences. Violence is totally different thing. Any other public comment from the board? Any public comment from the public? Hearing, seeing nobody's hand raised. Okay. And so now we go to announcements, Madam Town Manager.
So I'll read from the public notice with the information relevant to the Community Outreach Meeting. So the Community Outreach Meeting for a Proposed Marijuana Establishment is scheduled for February 4th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. The proposed adult-use retail marijuana establishment is anticipated to be located at 88 Massachusetts Avenue, Unit 1, in Lunenburg, and operated by Green Leaf Botanicals, Inc. Due to the current guidelines for large gatherings, the meeting will be held online via Zoom. Meeting ID number 5689610481. And the passcode is all capitals, GREENLEAF. There'll be an opportunity for the public to comment and ask questions. To participate, go to If you'd like to provide a comment or question before the meeting, please send to info greenleafbotanicals, all one word, no periods, at gmail dot com. And all this information is on the town website. Will be in the Lunenburg Ledger three different times before the meeting. It's been posted on Facebook, provided to public access to be on the scroll, and probably, and it was sent out through their townwide email address. So a variety of locations. Well, I have for public announcements.
Okay. And I have no further announcements. So let's go to appointments. At 7:05 PM, we have a Common Victular License Hearing for Conrad Cafe, Inc., doing business as Dippen Donuts, 455 Mass Ave. Do we have a mem, oh, there it is, right there. I am going to unmute Conrad Cafe, Inc.
That's me.
Okay. Would you introduce yourself, please?
Jessica St. Pierre.
Thank you. Okay, so this is is this a continued license, or is this a change of license, or did just this not get renewed in time? Is that what happened?
I, I think it's called a change of license. So I purchased the business from the previous owners.
Okay, so it's okay, change. Okay, and do you have any intention of changing anything they were doing as far as hours, or anything like that?
Nope, not really.
Okay. Madam Town Manager, has everything, all the paperwork and the fees been paid, as noted in all the safety inspections by the
Yes.
I would open it up to questions to the applicant, if anybody has any.
I have a question.
Mr. Jeffries.
So, good evening. Nice to meet you. This is really not too related to this approval tonight, but, and I think many of us frequent the business, and we've been a little frustrated by that drive-through speaker. Is that something that you're going to be addressing hopefully soon?
Yes, I have tested it out. There was some story of it not working, and I think, I'm sorry to say, it was probably a people problem and not a equipment problem. I tried it out several times, and it seems to work really great. It's pretty important that it works. So if something is actually not functioning correctly, then I will fix it. But at this time, all the equipment seems to be working great.
Great. Thank you.
I'm sure, Mr. Jeffries, the next time, the next time through the drive-through, if it doesn't work, Mr. Jeffries will tell you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate all the feedback. It helps.
Welcome to the business ownership part of things.
Thank you so much.
All right. If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion regarding the application for a common vic license for Conrad Cafe, Inc., doing businesses, Dippen Donuts at 455 Mass Ave.
I make the motion, yeah, we approve the common vic license.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All's in favor, there's a roll call vote. Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
An aye for me. Good luck.
Thank you.
You should be able to pick up, Madam Town Manager, when can she pick up the license?
Well, we need signatures from the board. Hopefully, we can get people to come in tomorrow. So we need a minimum three.
I cannot come in tomorrow.
We'll count you out. You're putting more pressure on us, Tom.
It's unintentional, I assure you. Okay, so please work with the Town Manager, the rest of the board, and get that done. So the license can be put up, and those Dunkins, those donuts can be dipped in, I guess.
Thank you.
The, the Town Manager will let you know when it is signed by enough members, by three members, so you can pick it up.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we have interviews, appointments, reappointments, resignation. So under that, we have the ratification of two Town Manager appointments for the DPW. We have one for an intermittent heavy equipment operator. And that would be Mike Roberts, and a heavy equipment operator, William Sal Napoli. For this, I am going to turn it over to the Town Manager and also unmute our DPW Director. Madam Town Manager, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I am asking for the ratification, as so noted by you, for the DPW Director, sorry, DPW intermittent heavy equipment operator for Mike Roberts, and heavy equipment operator, permanent full-time position for William Napoli. Mr. Roberts was a previous employee of the town. And after he left employment, he continued on as, for snow operations. So this would fulfill that continuation of that role. The intermittent heavy equipment operator, there was no such position in, under our Salary Administration Plan. So we went through the process of getting that added to the Salary Administration Plan, and Mr. Roberts would be the first one to be appointed under that position title. And as the board is well aware, we've spent a long time search for, we had three vacancies over the course of a couple of years for heavy equipment operators. This position tonight, for William Napoli to be appointed, would fill one of those vacancies, leaving one remaining vacancy. And I would ask if the DPW Director can add further information on these appointments.
And before he does, are any of the applicants, or any of the people being appointed, are they on this call? I don't see their names.
They are not.
Okay, I just want to make sure I didn't miss them. Mr. Oliva.
Good evening. So of these two appointments, Mr. Roberts, as Heather noted, was a previous employee of the DPW. He was here 13 years before he retired. He's been helping out plowing and sanding in the few years since he's retired. He's very well-regarded, very well-respected, and liked by the current staff who know him. So this is an easy one. This just makes him official under the title of intermittent operator. And I'd wholeheartedly push for his ratification. He's a good guy. I've met him. He's been there already for the storms, and he's a, he's a hard worker, and he, he's always there to help.
Great.
And Mr. Napoli, the new hire, the new full-time hire, he actually served or worked for a contractor who plowed for the town. I believe for about seven years, he did that. So he's familiar with the town and the roots. I believe he's from the area. He's owned his, he's owned his own landscaping business in the past. We sat down and interviewed with him, Julie and I, and Joe, my highway superintendent. We all liked him very much. We think personality-wise, he'll be a good fit for our crew. And we've got some good recommendations from him. I believe the former, my predecessor, gave a good recommendation for him, and even Joe, my highway superintendent, has worked with him in the past when he plowed and remembers and believes he'll fit in well, as well. So again, I'd fully endorse him.
Excellent. Anybody on the board have any questions for the Town Manager or the DPW Director?
No, just thinking.
Go ahead.
Okay, I would make a motion that we ratify the Town Manager's appointment of the DPW intermittent heavy equipment operator, Mike Roberts, and the heavy equipment operator, William Napoli.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for me. On our behalf, tell them, congratulations, welcome, either welcome them here or welcome them back. And I hope they work out well.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one.
Thank you, Rob.
Good night.
Okay, current business, approval of minutes of December 1st and December 8th, 2020. Everybody, those have been distributed. Unless there are modifications or changes to any of that, I would entertain a motion, which people should voice now. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion on the minutes of December 1st and 8th, 2020. I move that we approve the minutes of December 1st and December 8th, 2020. We have a second.
Second.
Excellent. Roll call vote. Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Aye for me. Number two of current business warrants, last week, last Wednesday or Thursday, I can't remember the exact date. I signed these warrants, an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $507,536.75. A payroll deduction warrant in the amount of $41,286.36. And a payroll warrant in the amount of $825,165.95. Any action item issues? I'm sorry, Ms. Adams.
I had raised my hand a moment ago. I just wanted to, I know that Elaine does our minutes, so she listens to our meetings. And I didn't know if maybe saying something earlier, but just condolences to Elaine. She had a passing in her family. And I think we're all thinking of her. And so when she goes to listen in and, and makes new minutes for this one, just thought maybe she should know that she's on her mind.
Thank you. Yes, she had her passing a couple, again, yesterday, I believe, so.
Yeah.
Not been a good season for a lot of people, and our hearts go to her. So thank you for making that point.
It's a lot of work for her to listen to all of us. She listens to all these meetings, sometimes four or five hours long, so at least she'll get a little moment that she knows we're thinking of her.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for saying that. Any action item issues? Seeing no hands. Any committee reports? Also no hands. Okay, we're going to jump to the workshop for a second, so we can go to the Town Manager Report. And then the rest of the meeting will be the workshop. So I'm going to hand it over to the Town Manager to give her report and any, any COVID-19 updates. Madam Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Announcement of existing vacancies. There is one vacancy in the Architectural Preservation District Commission. Four vacancies on the Bylaw Review Committee. One vacancy on the Cultural Council. One vacancy on the Historical Commission. One vacancy on the TCP Building Design Committee. One vacancy on the Senior Work Off Program Committee, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Interested persons can get the application form on our website, and once completed, send them to the Select Board's Office. An update on the Flat Hill Culvert. The DPW Director spoke with Mastiot today. And Mastiot is pleased that the project is already in the design phase, and recommended that we submit a small bridge program application, even though the program hasn't received the funding yet. The engineering firm that is doing the design is going to work on putting together this application in short order. Mastiot also did not see the need to perform a load rating analysis for the culvert in its existing condition. Mastiot informed the DPW Director that since this is the town's bridge, we can remove the load rating signage, therefore not allowing heavy trucks to go over the bridge, which may further impact the head wall and pipe. At this point, the bridge will remain a one lane, and Mastiot has increased their inspection frequency to every three months or less. Our engineering firm is fast-tracking the design of this project, so that the design work will be done in the spring, and the project would be ready to go out to bid once they receive 100% design approval from Mastiot. An update on the fuel tank project. The fuel tanks that are being installed at the DPW will be delivered this Friday, and the project is estimated to be complete by February 5th. I'm estimating that we will have approximately 80,000 remaining in unexpended capital dedicated for this project upon completion, barring any unforeseen changes from now until completion. An update on 925 Mass Ave. Tomorrow, I will be meeting with Shyla Matthews of Mass Development and our environmental site assessment consultant to discuss future funding options through Mass Development for 925 Mass Ave. In other announcements for meetings, the TCP Building Design Committee has a meeting on Zoom on Wednesday, January 13th, at 5:30 PM. The Conservation Commission has a meeting on Zoom on Wednesday, January 13th, at 7:00 PM. I will be attending the Nishoba Valley Regional Dispatch District Administration Board meeting on Zoom on Thursday, January 14th, at 9:30 AM. And I'll be attending the Green Communities Task Force that evening at 6:30 PM, and the Finance Committee meeting on Thursday, January 14th, at 7:00 PM. Town offices will be closed on Monday, January 18th, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Are there any questions related to the Town Manager Report? Okay.
I offer a comment, though. Thank you very much for the work that's being done on the Flat Hill Culvert. It seems as if you're really expediting this process as best as can be done. I know that many residents will be impacted if this bridge goes out of usage. So I just, I really appreciate all the efforts that are clearly being taken to minimize that time if, if it comes to it. So thank you.
And I would extend that. Thank you to the DPW Director. He's been instrumental in that as well. In regards to COVID-19 updates, the Board of Health issued their weekly update, and the cumulative COVID-positive cases to date in town is 418, as of January 8th, and one death. The state report shows 394 as a total as of January 5th. This is an increase of 37 cases from the previous week. In COVID-19 cases in all of Massachusetts, as of January 7th, there were 393,188 COVID-19 cases, 12,634 deaths, and 11,417,197 people have been tested to date. In other state announcements, the, in addition to providing grants to businesses within the existing pool of applications for the Small Business Grant Program, applications are now being accepted for new sector-specific Small Business Relief Grant Program that targets industries experiencing the most significant economic hardship and a loss of revenue. Industries given preference in this new program include restaurants, bars, caterers, and food trucks, indoor recreation and entertainment establishments, gyms and fitness centers, event support companies such as photographers or videographers, personal services such as nail salons, barber shops, independent pharmacies, and independent retailers. This new Business Relief Program will offer grants up to $75,000, but not more than three months' operating expenses to be used for payroll, and employee benefit costs, mortgage, interest, rent, utilities, and interest on other debt obligations. This online portal is currently open, but it will close this Friday, January 15th, and awards are expected to be announced in February. For more information on this, you can go to www empoweringsmallbusiness.org. For information on vaccination, there is a significant amount of information on the state website specific to vaccination. The website address is www.mass.gov/covid-19-vaccine-in-massachusetts. That's where you can all find the scheduled phases of outlay of vaccines. On January 7th, the administration announced that industry restrictions for capacity limits and reduced gathering limits that went into effect on December 26th will be extended for at least two more weeks to January 24th. Capacity limits, this will remain for, subject to the 25-capacity limit. And the industries affected are restaurants, close-contact personal services, theaters and performance venues, casinos, office spaces, places of worship, retail businesses, driving and flight schools, golf facilities, or indoor spaces, libraries, lodging for common areas, arcades and indoor recreation businesses, fitness centers and health clubs, museums, cultural facilities, and guided tours. And workers and staff will now not count towards the occupancy count for restaurants, places of worship, close-contact personal services, and retail businesses. The gatherings limit, the current gatherings limit has been extended as well. Indoor gatherings will remain limited to 10 people. Indoor gatherings will remain limited to ten people. Outdoor gatherings will remain limited to twenty-five people outside. Gathering's limit applies to private homes, event venues and public spaces. It's all I, the new information I have rel- relevant to COVID nineteen.
We still considered red?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so. Any questions about either the report or the COVID nineteen update? No, okay. So, we go to our, uh, workshop area, which is the feature of tonight. Um, the workshop is a joint meeting with the Architectural Preservation District Commission. And the Historical Commission with the Board of Selectmen regarding the old primary school. So, uh, the first thing I want to do is, if you are on the. Uh, APDC, if you could raise your hand, then I will unmute you. Oh, okay. Colin, are you, are you the chair?
Uh, no, Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, okay. Uh, Mr. Corcoran. Let's unmute him.
I'm assuming.
The chair?
Richard, yeah. Yeah, he's, he is the chair.
If you could identify, uh, either you, Richard, or Colin, can you identify all the rest of the people who may not know? That I'm asking them, or they may not know where the raise your hand is?
Uh, I don't know. I'm looking for it right now.
Uh, but do, do you see the names?
Oh, you, you, okay, you're unmuted now.
I do.
Richard McGrath, present.
Richard, can you change your name so it adds your last name, please, when, so when you're shown?
I have no idea. I have no idea how to do that.
Okay, I'll do it, I'll do it. That, that's fine, I'll do it.
And I don't know how to raise my hand on Zoom. Or Richard doesn't.
Capital M, lower c, capital G, R A T H.
Correct.
I just want it, when your name comes up, so that people see, okay.
Oh, yeah, wait a minute.
So who else on this list is, um. Is on the APDC, or is it just the three of you?
Anthony.
Brian, did I not unmute you?
Yeah, freezing.
No, I think he, did he say he was mewing you?
No, froze.
So Brian Corcoran, I think, is next, but, um, it seems as if Mr. Alonso is frozen.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, I'm back here, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so. So are these all the people from the APDC?
Anthony Nacastro is.
Okay, Tony Nacastro, okay, so let's, uh, try to unmute him. I don't see.
Your peer's unmuted, Tom.
I don't think he has any sound, though.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he's not attached to any audio, so. Uh. Alright, let's go down the list here. I'm gonna. Bill, you're from the Historical Commission, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I wanna. Uh, Chuck?
Yes.
Chuck, are you a member of the APDC or the Historical Commission?
Uh, no, Historical Society.
He's Historical Society.
Yeah, I can't hear Chuck here. Chuck, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Uh. Alright, I'm, you know what, I'm gonna see if I can unmute everybody. That's gonna be a whole lot easier. Okay. I've un, I've asked everyone to be unmuted here. Uh, if, I know PAC is not a member of that. Anthony still has not unmuted. I will try directly. Uh, I don't believe Dave Passios is a member of either of those two, so he'll remain muted. And Mark Bersh, is, is Mark Bersh a member of APDC or the Historical Commission? I don't believe so. Okay. Alright, sorry about that. These are all the technical parts, the joys of doing this. The meeting is about one topic. It's about the old primary school, which everybody. We don't have to, uh. Excuse me?
You're making your own echo. We're all echoing.
Seems to be feedback from Brian Corcoran.
Is that better?
I'll talk, is that better? No, I still hear the echo.
I'll, I'll put it on mute.
Alright. Okay, yes, the muted, the echo is gone, okay. So, the topic is the old primary school. I, I'm not, I'm gonna just start by saying that we wanna keep. The conversation, we're gonna start where everybody knows we're starting. It, it was vacated after the new primary school was built. For a few years, this is the Reader's Digest version, it was vacated. The, a developer looked to make it through, uh, HUD grants, the Housing and Urban Development. And at the time, we wanted to try to make it senior housing. That, that hold on the product, a, a project on that project, that had a hold on the building for three to five years. As they tried to get through the government funding, which was not ever coming, because it happened in the middle of the two thousand eight. Economic downturn. Since then. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, I guess, well, I'm, I'm gonna introduce this, then the APDC can bring their meeting to order, so thank you. Uh. After that, it has been left vacant, uh, for, ever since then, ever since, there's not been any project there. He, that's holding the building probably since two thousand and eleven or twelve. Through all kinds of studies, where we wrestled as a town what to do with it. There's been proposals, been several proposal. To sell it, to demolish it, to do a bunch of things with either, uh, town meeting warrant articles or otherwise. And that's where we are, uh, today. So the discussion today is discuss what, from the selectman's point of view, what we would like to see happen. From the APDC, we wanna hear from you about what your viewpoints of the building are, and how we can navigate. A path forward, so the, that, that we have, uh. Something positive come on the other side of this. Something happens with that building that the town can, uh, can show, instead of a vacant building that seems to. Uh, be deteriorating further. So that's the intro to it. I'm gonna turn it over to Richard McGrath to call his, his commission's meeting to order first.
Uh, the Architectural Preservation District Commission has a quorum called to order, seven thirty-nine. P M. And the Lunenburg Historical Commission has a quorum. Uh, called to order, seven thirty-nine P M.
Can you please roll call each of those members one at a time for each of the commissions, please?
Uh, Architectural Preservation District Commission, um, Colin Dwyer.
Here.
Uh, Brian Cochrane.
Here.
Anthony Nacastro. Not here, I guess.
He's unmuted, but I, I think he's, he's been dropping off and coming back in. I think he's having internet issues.
Okay. Um, Historical Commission. Um. Bill Laxo.
Present.
Jennifer Sanderson.
Present.
Um, Kevin Busom, uh, I don't think he's here.
Yeah, he's here. I just, I just unmuted him, yep.
Oh, he is, great, excellent.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so I'll start by saying that on October thirty-first, the board met at the site. To have a, a sidewalk about what we, uh, each. Saw as a, a vision for what we can do at that location with that building and the rest of the property, et cetera. Uh, all members can speak for themselves, but I think in summary, uh. Just not to get Meyer down in details, the summary, it is the intention of the board. To propose a project that calls for the demolition of the actual building. And the construction of green space, two green spaces, a forward green space, a, a back green space with a mid parking lot. Uh. For the town to use for such recreational and open space areas, such as, and not. I mean, again, these are just things that we're putting forward, such as band concerts or the farmer's market. And other, you know, potential uses, uh, of that area that would require. You know, both parking and the enjoyment and the use of green space. That, that is what we are looking to do. Uh, the, the reasoning behind our decision is, we feel, and that's why we are calling. The, the two other commissions here. We feel that the building is not going to, i- it's renovation or restoration. Is not going to be supported by the town during a town meeting vote, so we are not gonna raise town money to. To renew or revive that building. And it is our opinion that if we put it out for public, uh, or private sector restoration. That we would not get anybody biting on that, as I believe it has been offered at least once before. And we got no responses. So, that is the position that the board currently has. I will ask the board themselves if anybody has anything. Uh, to add that I didn't summarize, or if I didn't summarize anything incorrectly, uh, accidentally, please correct that, but I believe that's our position. Mr. Jeffries.
Yes, good evening. So, I think you, you categorize that correctly, uh, fully, and I, I wanna just make a couple contributions to it as well. So one of the, you know, all of us who own homes. I'm sure we all get letters in the mail every couple of months that say, you know, I'll buy your house from you, right? I mean, that, that happens for most people every six months or so. And when developers are looking to develop land, you don't have to go hunting for them. They usually come hunt for you. Um, it's, it's, and in this case, we have a parcel, we have a old school that's, that's been vacant for well over fifteen years, I believe. Um, you know, we have to think about what is the town's appetite for stuff? You know, the town wants to spend money on education for sure, wanna spend money on roads, um. I don't think that we are, by in and of itself, I don't think people want their tax dollars to go to preserve buildings unless that building. Has a use for it, um, and then, you know, that's gonna benefit the town. In this case, we have a school that is not benefiting the school department. You know, in all this time, we have not found a, a need for the space in, in, in terms of it doesn't meet the needs. Of any, any particular group within town well enough for it to be rehabbed. And so, we're stuck in this position where anything that, that happens there is gonna be costly. If it goes, you know, people don't wanna give up town land. Uh, intent, there's a general sentiment in town, that this is municipal land right near the center, people don't wanna give that up. Um, when you think about what the private sector could do, and with this parcel, you know, anything's gonna require a lot more parking than is currently available. So in many ways, I think that there's a feeling that we're limited on that parcel of what we can do. But w- we've come to the realization that the building isn't meeting anybody's needs. And just like when, you know, your house no longer meets your needs, you, you have to do something different. In this case, you know, we have land that does meet our needs. There's an opportunity that's been raised several times by. Uh, Selectman Adams, and, and she can certainly speak for herself, but she's raised the point many times. That we need to have a community green, that the current gazebo space where band concerts happen, that it's a safety concern for parents. Uh, and, and again, I'll certainly, Kate, uh, Selectman Adams can, can express that in her own words, but that's a really valid point. And that, you know, if we wanna have a, a place in town for the community to focus on, we just don't have it. And so the opportunity of this parcel is to create that new common space. Um, a better green to have a lot of community events at. Uh, we don't need the building, but we certainly need the land. Um, based on the current rules, we need to, I think, come to an agreement today, and I think that what we're trying to come to an agreement on today is that. The path forward is tearing it down. So that, with that, I think that, that summarizes, I think, my perspective, as well as the views of, of many others, uh, here in our community.
Ms. Adams.
Sure, we're reaching the point of some redundancy, so I'll just, um, add a couple of things. Um, in regards to that parcel, it's about, I think, two and a half acres. And, uh, it's already been touched upon, but one of the key things, when I started, um. Speaking about town center is the idea of buildings versus land, and so it's an opportunity for a piece of municipal land preservation. Um, as been stated, the really only future use of that building is in the private sector. Um, most likely, um, it's been looked at for town hall, uh, renovations and things like that, and yet it's been vacant since two thousand and five. Um, and it's, there's no real guarantee when something goes to the private sector, it's more and more difficult to even preserve a building. Um, so in terms of that piece of land, and, um, Selectman, um. Alonso mentioned, um, there's a, there's a lot of opportunity for, um, a large park in the back where there could be the band concerts. Um, parking in the middle, maybe a small attractive park in the front that you would see from town center. There's been studies, and we don't even really need to study it to know the fact that we're lacking, um, parking in town center. So a project here would, um, make that, um, sort of shabby parking area, um, usable for town center. We already have the Historical Society, which is a private property, um, abutting that parcel, and I think it would make a nice part of a town green campus. To have our own Historical Society, our museum as a part of it. And they, um, do have, um, parking rights over some of that space, so that's complimentary to the proj- project. Um, I have four young kids and, um. As, um, Michael Ray had pointed out, tree lightings, band concerts, I always had a balance whether or not I'd enjoy them. And whether or not the children would enjoy them, and being flanked on all sides by fast roads and zero parking. Um, is difficult for young kids, but it's also not really compliant with, um. With the world of, with the world of ADA compliance. Um, with a larger town green away from the road. Um, I envision, you know, the parking, um, spaces to be able to bring, um, accessibility to band concerts. Tree lightings and events, um, by way of handicap parking, um, correct walkways with the, um. You know, correct, um, grading and things like that. Um, the piece itself, if you walk the land. It's a really beautiful, um, piece of land. It's lined, um, on a couple of the sides with historic sugar maples. So there's some beautiful, um, agricultural features to that land. That we could preserve by keeping it municipal land, and by clearing out old brush, we already have some really, um. You know, special things to work with there. Um, sometimes people talk about moving the gazebo in a sense. I don't see altering the, the triangle down there at all. Gazebo stays, the memorials stay, that's its own little inaccessible triangle. Um, this is a new space, when anybody who's been around since there was that hatch shell behind the high school. We used to have a spot for band concerts when we had, um, the, um, bonfires and things. So this is creating a space for, um, when we started talking about this four years ago. With a, a band space, you could have a summer concert series, you could have some food trucks available. You could take the band concerts and things like that to another level. By turning this into a very, um, open and simple green. Okay, sorry, that was a lot, but I've been thinking about it for four years, so it's hard to rein it in.
Any other members of the board want to voice anything that has not been said? I will turn it over to the APDC for them to, you know, weigh in on this. What, you know what our intentions are, and I'd love to hear, uh, from you and your commission, please.
Uh, Richard McGrath, uh, speaking, um. The demolition of that building would be contrary to the, um, mission of the Architectural Preservation District Commission. Which is to preserve, uh, the integrity of the. uh, the integrity of the structures in the district and the character of the town. Um, so we have, it is a conflict um, with the idea of tearing that building down. Um, has the uh, select board explored the option of having that building restored, selling it and having it restored in the private sector so that the building remains intact and on the payroll, on uh, tax rolls?
So the first, the answer to that is, uh, and, and please correct me, man of town manager, I think this went out for an RFP or an RF, uh, you know, request for interest or proposals, right?
Correct. We did not.
About when was that, what year?
Oh.
Like seventeen?
No, it was after seventeen, I think it was, probably a year and a half to two years ago now.
Right, and we, how many responses did we get?
Zero.
Right, and then we've asked the town to put it in the hands of the Board of Selectmen so they could see if they could sell it. And that has been up at least twice and been rejected twice by the town, not by the board, but by the town. So we've explored these options.
Chair, if I may?
Ms. Adams.
Yeah, I think that's, and I love um, historical preservation of buildings, I mean, uh, I, I, I really understand the mission behind preserving buildings, but there is, in this particular mun- municipal space, um, there's no resolution under these two separate topics, in the sense that it is a piece of municipal land. And in order to preserve the building privately, the land must be sold, and I do think we've seen in the past few years at a variety of um, meetings, that the town doesn't have the appetite to sell the land. So if the town doesn't want to sell the land, and we can't afford to fix the building, I think it's time to say, let's make a nicer outcome for Lunenburg. There's a liability to having this building in its current state. Um, and also, it's, it's, it's just, it, it's, it's, it's physically very unpleasant to look at at this point. Um, it'd be in the millions of dollars to preserve it. And um, and, and so I, that's where I think it just comes to a point where it, it was explored to go private. Um, conveyance was explored, and, and now we just have a, a terribly dangerous building without a use. And um, I think we also have a deteriorating ritter, um, a town hall that needs a lot of work. And so as a municipality, we can't afford to preserve all of those pieces of history. Um, and so, I mean, I, I think we need to preserve some of town center, um, the town hall, um, you know, and ritter are sort of featured buildings, and if we only have so many resources, they can't go to each of these municipal spaces. And so I hope we can find a way to compromise. I think the outcome of a park is, I see it as, we're almost three hundred years old. What can we do for town center to give something to the future? The current bandstand location, as our population grows and as cars drive faster and people are more distracted, I don't think it's a viable place for us to meet in that capacity. And so I think we have this really positive use for the land, and it would, it would be nice to um, be able to, to find that path.
Okay, go back to this APDC. So, Mr. McGrath, those are the answers to the two initial questions you posed.
Um, on the RFP, um, we were never notified that that was going out, nor were we consulted about it. Um, how, how is that process um, form and, and where is it advertised for sale?
Man of town manager, can you summarize what the process was as best, as your recollection, to the best of your recollection?
Have to look back through our records, but um, standard practice is that it's advertised um, on central register, in a local newspaper, and on the bulletin board. And um, would be probably a minimum of thirty days out of the out to bid. And I believe with that, um, I recall we had a site inspection, we had one person attend that. Um, they're a realty company, I believe, and, but they did not, ultimately, they did not submit a bid.
Uh, the um, the width of the, of the, of putting that out to bid, there's not a lot of um, it's not like it's statewide, is that correct?
It is statewide, so Central Register is a state site, it's a requirement.
So that's on, uh, that's online?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Colin, would you like to speak on this?
Well, uh, I think, you know, we, I, I guess I, I do recall that RFP process, uh, where it was, um, where proposals were requested. But it was a period of about thirty days that it was open to proposals, uh, and for a building that's been sitting there for fifteen years, it's a very narrow window. I think we could do a lot more, we could try a lot harder to uh, find a, a private use for the building. Uh, I understand that the town is probably unwilling to sell the building and sell the property that it stands on. Uh, but there are long-term leases, I think that would be certain, certainly an option. Uh, and um, so I, I don't, I don't feel that the um, that avenue has been very vigorously explored.
Uh, Richie McGrath, um, and uh, there are certain companies that um, their expertise is developing these type of buildings, there's a number of them around in New England. Um, a lot of these buildings have been developed in other communities successfully. Um, I, I don't feel that, that uh, these options have, have been explored at all. Brian Cochran, would you comment on this?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, a comment as well. It sounds like there's a plan to do green space, but yet we have very little funding to have tried to preserve the building at all. Um, I guess, is the plan to do the green space, do you have the funding for this? How much is it to take the building down? How much is it to renovate the green space? Has all that money been appropriated? Or is it right now, just you're looking to try and say, let's tear the building down? I, I think it's a very short uh, look at the building, and I mean, they seem to be plans that are floating out there. I haven't seen anything that's really hardened concrete. The other thing is, we have a bylaw. It's called um, the demolition by neglect. And the town has really been negligent and not following its own bylaw. They've let this building deteriorate to the point where, you know, we want to tear it down now, correct? And it's just a, it's kind of a frustrating thing. We've gone through this before, and it's like, yeah, we're gonna do some work, we're gonna, you know, it's unsafe, we're gonna um, you know, do some things to the building to make it a little bit safer. But yet, nothing's really been done. And now, it's to the point where, yep, we need to tear it down, we need to create green space. You don't have money to fix the building, but you have money to do the green space? It just seems contradicting. I don't know if you have a comeback on that.
Well, I, I don't want to sound like it's a comeback because as a, I, I have a response to that, okay? I don't, a comeback would imply that I have some satirical or sarcastic thing to say.
Sorry, I should have said response.
I have a response to that. So the first thing is, that the amount of money it would take, while we don't have a plan, we're looking at designs because we've never gone forward with that, there's only been discussion. But the cost to build a green space alone, compared to the numbers that we've been told will take, will be required to renovate that building are not even in the same ballpark, they're not, you know, they're barely in the same county. I mean, they're really exponentially different. One is in potentially low six figures and one is well into the seven figures. So, you know, it's going to take millions to renovate that building, to be useful. Uh, so that's a huge difference between the two. I also would, would want to, in echoing what Ms. Adams said earlier, uh, I don't think there's anybody on the board, and again, I always hesitate speaking for the board, but I think this is a pretty accurate statement. There's no one on the board who doesn't want to preserve historical uh, his- the, the history of the town and the historical aspect of the town. But I think a couple of things are true in this regard. Number one, there's got to be some more significance than the building's age that raises it to the point of restoration, and that is one issue that me, I personally have a problem with. I don't know of anything unique about that building except its age. I don't know of any events that happened there, I don't know anything specific about the architecture that makes it special. That's number one, but more importantly, since you mentioned the demolition by neglect, is that the APDC didn't even exist until, I don't know, twenty seventeen or eighteen, and this building has been vacant since two thousand and five, so it's been vacant well before, you can't really apply these bylaws to a building that was vacant already for thirteen years before the district even existed. I think that's an unfair thing. And also, I can't, even if I promoted it, we can't force the town meeting to vote for projects that they as a group don't see fit to fund. I don't know whether they'll fund a green space, to be very honest with you. I would hope they would, but I don't know that they will. But we've tried different things with this building, and they certainly, the town is not going to put up their own money, town money, to renovate it. And if we try to close the envelope, if we try to close the envelope of the building and make it secure, that costs money too. And we have to start saying, is that money that we want to use if the long-term intention isn't to keep the building? So, we're in a tough spot between what the town meeting wants and what the bylaws say, and that's why we're having this conversation. Not because people don't want to preserve history, I just want to be clear on that.
The APDC doesn't want the town to pay to fix the building just to maintain it and to be in compliance with the town bylaw. Um, the APDC was of the position that the building be sold to a developer and taken off the hands of the town. Um, and preserved in that way, let somebody else preserve it, not the town. Um, historic significance, the town and uh, of Lunenburg is passed through there on their way to adulthood for, since the nineteen twenties, so it has a, a significant incentive in the town, it's been there a long time. It, it's an anchor for the town's heritage. The architecture is early twentieth century, which was typical of schoolhouses like that in rural communities, they're all over the place. And again, uh, there are companies that specify, that their specialty is developing these properties, there's certain developers that go around buying these properties and developing them, turning them into uh, elderly housing, uh, as well as uh, giving space to the town. Um, that's been our position all along, um, i- is to preserve it but not have the town preserve it. Um, I'd like to go to the Historical Commission and see if they have a comment on this.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, a few of us have our virtual hands up.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to even out the conversation by everybody, so some people have spoken multiple times, so I'm looking to bring other people in. Mr. McGrath, you wanted to go to the Historical Commission, but I saw Colin also had his hand that I think he wanted to speak.
Uh, I just wanted to make a clarification between uh, preservation and restoration of the building. Uh, what we've been, what are the APDC has been uh, demanding of the town is that they stop the demolition by neglect, that is, that they just uh, do the necessary repairs to keep it from degrading any further. Uh, we've never demanded that the town actually restore it back to a functional building. We just wanted to keep it from falling apart any further, and I think in terms of the, the expenditures that we've looked into, uh, it's, it's been fairly modest, just to keep the roof on it and to keep the envelope sealed up and to keep people from breaking into the building and so forth. Uh, that's what we've requested over and over from the town manager and the Board of Selectmen, that they take those steps to just preserve it and keep it from deteriorating. Uh, and as I say, to restore it to a usable building is another matter that we have never um, asked the town to.
Okay. Mr. McGrath, did you want to go to the Historical Commission?
Uh, yes, I'd, I'd like to have comment from uh, Bill Laxo and Jennifer Sanderson. Um, Bill?
We not have. Uh, Bill is unmuting him again. If anybody's video is on that wants to speak from the commission, please raise your hand physically so I can see it. Because I don't see anybody who's on, who's wanting to speak. I've asked Bill to unmute, but that is not being responded to.
Um, is uh, Kevin Busan?
Yeah, he's here.
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, wh- what is your opinion, Kevin?
Um, so I don't have any background in, you know, structural engineering or anything like that, you know, I'm still in college, so I uh, I don't really know which would be the best decision to make. Um, no, I, when I was young, I went to preschool there, so it definitely, I have memories with that building. Uh, not many, so it would be sad to see it go. Um, but I do understand the town's standpoint of turning it into green space and wanting to keep that for the town rather than sending it off to a private investor or someone like that. So, um, I, I was still going to listen to see what other people had to say about it right now, if that's all right.
Okay.
Um, and I'd like to hear from Anthony Nacastro if he's available. On the APDC.
I will ask to unmute him. Mr. Nacastro, are you with us? Mr. Nacastro? I've unmuted him, he shows as unmuted. Uh, he can't, I, he's chatting that he can. Yeah, we can't hear you. I don't know what's wrong with their speaker, your microphone, sorry.
Anthony?
He said.
He said that he is.
He said.
He said he's muted.
So he's. There's something wrong.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, well, I think you summarized the board's position pretty well. I, I guess, as I hear the comments from the APDC, um, I, I guess rather than talk in circles, what, what I'm interested to hear from them is, what would it take for them to change their position? Would it take, uh, for example, uh, the town to put out another RFP to try and attract a developer? Uh, would it take um, a vote at a town meeting um, for the, the limited restoration? Or that they suggested, Mr. Dwyer suggested regarding, you know, uh, making the um, building envelope. Or that they suggested, Mr. Dwyer suggested regarding, you know, uh, making the um, building envelope, um, you know, secure, uh, would, if those those sorts of things fail, would they then be open to moving forward with a more radical solution such as demolition of the structure?
Richard McGrath, um, I would like to see uh, a a stronger effort made to uh, sell that building. Um, the uh, the town could contact um, the Massachusetts Historical Commission and um, and get information from them about uh, companies that that uh, do this work uh, of uh, redeveloping buildings like that. Um, also, they might have other suggestions. Um, but just to uh, and put it on the bulletin board, local uh, newspaper and the Central Register, um, I'm not, uh, I I just don't think you're you're um, contacting the right people um, that would bid on this type of property. Um, so I'd like to see that explored further.
How long would that listing be? I know Mr. Mr. Cullen Dwyer mentioned about it wasn't on long, and I think you did too, Mr. McGrath. How long should it be listed?
Uh, I think thirty days if it's if it's with the uh, you know, if it is, if it's much broader than than where you had it. Uh, so people that are in uh, restoration and development, um, would, it would be brought to their attention.
Okay. And it let, what would your reaction be if I play hypotheticals that we listed it for thirty days and it came back with no interest?
Um, and I'd be open to a further discussion amongst the members and uh, see what they thought.
Okay. If it was, you have not weighed in yet.
If there was enough consensus to have a move on it.
Okay. Mr. Marino?
Uh, actually Todd asked asked the constructive questions. I have a question I'd like to ask you though, Mr. Chairman. Cause you've been around for quite a few years, uh, on the board for quite a few years, but as I recall, there was uh, at least one or two efforts to sell the building. Matter of fact, I I thought that at one time, early on, that there was a company interested in buying it uh, for the purpose of of building a, some kind of uh, assisted living. Is that correct?
I am not aware of anybody who is interested in buying the building, but I also remember there's a two-year gap from me not being on the board, so it may have happened during that time period. Uh, man, a town manager, are you aware of any?
No, I, maybe selectman Marino is referring to the affordable housing that was the project that fell through.
Right. There was an assisted living one at the very beginning, right in two thousand and six, that lasted through to two thousand ten or eleven, we let that go on before it was realized that the government, the federal government, it was at that point, when they, when the, when this all happened and the HUD developer came in, they were funding a lot of things through the federal government to rehab old buildings for uh, assisted living or or senior housing. Uh, when the economic downturn of two thousand and eight hit, all that money went away. And I, to this day, I think it never really has come back to that money. The money has not been put into those programs. But we kept it and we kept submitting it year after year at the request of the developer, hoping that the next year would be the year. Until after year four, we decided, you know what, this is not going anywhere, obviously. And that's when it lay dormant for a while before anybody decided what we could do with it. And of course, that point was the 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 height or the depth, depending on your point of view, of the uh, of the economy problem. So nobody really had any money at any levels, local, state or federal to do anything. And that's why it sat dormant for the years it did. So.
Well, yeah, to my point is is uh, that is what I was referring to. And the point I was trying to make is that there has been some efforts uh, to uh, to try to either sell the building or um, or whatnot. And my second question to the town manager would be, isn't there a serious isn't it true that there's is a criteria that you have to follow uh, in terms of uh, bidding out a job or bidding out a uh, a building like that? You're talking about, oh, you're talking about thirty days and so forth. Don't, you have to follow criteria, don't you?
Correct. Yes. There is uh, was not, I can guarantee it was not only advertised for three days. Uh, the requirement is much longer.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Adams?
Okay, sure. There's a couple um, responses built in here and and a and a couple of thoughts. Um, and so they're in my notes and maybe a little out of order. Um, one thing in regards to um, the Chair of the APDC saying that they would um, be open to further discussion if it went out for RFP and there was no response. That has already happened. And so we're never going to make progress in town center if we keep dialing back to experiences we've already had or things we've already studied. Um, this piece of land has gone in and out of conveyance with the selectmen. Uh, it went through a town meeting to have the selectmen have the ability to convey that parcel when it was um, going to possibly become um, assisted, um, become housing. Um, and then through subsequent town meetings and different articles, conveyance was given back to the people or the town, taken from the selectmen. So I think there's a really important um, thing that's coming up and both for historical reasons and legal reasons, um, sometimes I miss selectman Ebersole. Um, he was really good on this topic um, in terms of the history of that space. Now, in terms of the preservation and what the APDC has been charged with, demanding that a building or a parcel be sold, I think is way outside of their jurisdiction. This is a piece of historic town center land that belongs to the town of Lunenburg. It belongs to the people in Lunenburg. And I see the land as being here far longer than the building. The land has been here since it became Lunenburg. And we are running out of real estate in town center in regards to it belonging to the town as we build more buildings and just by nature of the population getting bigger. We know through work with MRPC and other organizations that there, we need parking in town center. Without land, we cannot provide parking to the businesses in town center. So we cannot help our businesses in town center thrive without parking. I have said tonight, I do not think we have a sufficient meeting space for band concerts, tree lightings and such. Farmers markets questionable, they do a really good job with the Ritter parcel, um, which could all be incorporated into this town green. We could expand the markets, like I said, summer concert series, food trucks and whatnot. The land belongs to the town. And although the APDC is important, has been charged with preserving pieces of Lunenburg, the land is a piece of Lunenburg that I have passionately been advocating to preserve. The loss of selling this piece of land to preserve the building, and we aren't even guaranteed. I mean, look what happened to the school in Fitchburg that was preserved. Somebody blew it up. And that's awful. But by nature of weather and and human behavior, we are not guaranteed anything, but we are guaranteed a piece of land. The land remains. And I have passionately advocated for the fact that the town center municipal land is something we could never get back. We could never daydream or reinvent the use of it. And so to hear things that say the position must be to sell it, it must be to get it to a pri- private developer. If we go back, and I I should have done so myself, I regret not doing the homework of of the amount of times that land conveyance has gone to town meeting and been turned down. That's the voice of the people. They do not want to sell that piece of land. And when it was put out for sale, it didn't work. So we've tried that too. And then we know things like we need parking, we have to shut down Memorial Drive when we have a classic car show. We know we're out of space. We know we could use, we know we could use this land. And I also am a passionate advocate of preserving buildings. And so I don't easily condemn a building. I went to school there. Um, but there was a school on that site that was knocked down. Um, and so um, I one time visited the Historical Society. I would love to hear from Chuck because they are a very valid member of the history of the town. I was on the steps speaking to Bill Tyler about the town green idea. He had the same vision uh, for a very long time. And he has shown me pictures of um, townspeople playing on that site and preparing for some type of town event. Um, it was sort of a gathering spot, um, uh, an open space, if you will. And so history and preservation is a very dynamic thing. And I just think the piece of land is in, it's it's lined with historic sugar maples. The developer might come cut those down. I I'd advocate, we should preserve the trees. So there's a lot of different ways to look at this, and I feel very passionate about it because I've been talking about it for four years. Um, I was very much against the conveyance of the land. And there were actually renderings of apartments on the land that didn't include the current building. And when I kept speaking out about against selling the land, somebody said, well, what would you do with it? And I sat for a few hours one night and said, what would I do with it? And I thought I would use it for a park. And you know, so I I probably seem a little over the top, but I've been thinking about it, talking about it for four years. Um, a company called Vertex has studied the building, given ve- very detailed reports of the millions of dollars that it needs. Tape studied the building as a concept to maybe be renovated for town halls. In the tape, which is now dated by about five years, there are numbers assigned to the demolition of the building. We know more about the materials in the building. Um, I think demolition at the time was somewhere about five hundred thousand, but it's a fraction of what it would cost to renovate it. Um, I think we could reach out to people in town to help support the um, park and see if there was any um, companies that would donate to, I mean, essentially becoming, you know, open space, grass, some plantings. Um, the APDC's position to save the building can only really exist if we depart with the land. And I am so against doing that, whether I'm a selectman or a citizen. Um, I I think the land is something we should hold on to. And um, the the last thing I'll say at this moment is, in addition to um, what we know, the vote through town meeting about conveyance, we also did a survey last spring at town meeting. The intent of that survey was to get opinions from the people who actually showed up to vote. So survey monkeys and online, we're not sure if we're in touch with with the legislative branch, who's coming to town meeting. And in that survey, they had options. What would you see on this parcel? It was specifically designed for this topic. And there was a huge response for both open space and increased parking. And so we don't, we don't come to this lightly without respect for the building. But the only way for there to be a building is to lose the land. And I think we have enough data to say, please work with us to see this as an opportunity for town center that is really a gift to Lunenburg rather than giving it away for, to giving it away.
Mr. Jeffries?
And thank you. Thank you, selectman Adams, for for that history and reminding all of us about that survey and 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 all the steps that have been taken to try to get some consensus on this property. You know, I think that as a, as a, one of the leaders of our community, you know, I do believe very strongly that communities need the flexibility to meet the needs of its members. You know, and as as our town grows and changes, that, you know, we have to look at our current population, assess what they need and make steps to address those needs, you know. And in my role, I've recognized that, you know, we contribute, you know, less than, you know, half of a percentage point to seniors in our town. You know, as an example, that, you know, we have many parents, we have, you know, we had a presentation from the superintendent of schools um, over a year ago now, I think it was a year ago, in which she um, mentioned that, you know, there's a huge need on the school department in which their, you know, their budget needs to increase significantly. You know, one of the challenges I think of of our role is, and and certainly town manager included in this, especially town manager included in this, one of the challenges of our role is being able to to meet the needs of the many various members of our community as best we can. And, you know, one of the challenges in creating the APDC is sometimes there's unintended consequences when we try to do good in certain areas that we we step on ourselves in another. I don't think anyone in town intended for this property to sit and look the way it does for fifteen years. I mean, I don't, I don't think anyone's happy about that. I think we've all been really frustrated at the progress of this building. Certainly, you know, this board changes over in membership frequently enough that, you know, we do lose some institutional knowledge about things that do occur. But what we all recognize that this building's been sitting there for fifteen years. That is not meeting the needs of the community, that there are needs of the community that can be met. And 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 you know, and we're just not doing it yet. Buildings have a lifespan, unfortunately. And I think we've exceeded the lifespan. So the next steps in this process, I think whether we bring this out to bid, one thing to be mindful of is while we can suggest, and I I'm hearing members of the APDC, I certainly hear you, I can recognize where you're coming from and appreciate it, but I think it's a little bit removed from the reality of what it is to redevelop a building. And if you're in the space of redeveloping buildings and you have a building from nineteen twenty, you know, that certainly does not come close to meeting any current building code, uh, is not energy efficient in any capacity that requires significant modernizations to meet the needs of what you may think is a hundred years from now. That to, that when you look at the current parking requirements for what you need when you, when you, when you make a building space open to the public, that there's really limited opportunities from any perspective on what you can do with this parcel. It's really limited. Um, and I think that to to keep kicking ourselves down the road is certainly not useful. I do appreciate all the feedback and comments I've had today, and I think it unfortunately puts us in a difficult position uh, on how we need to proceed, because I think that there are political considerations, politics being the people. I think that we do have to think about the people of our community and what their needs are. And to spend, you know, I think that the solution that we're gonna have to come up with unfortunately is to is to find a way to move forward regardless. And and I certainly think that the ideal here is how do we do so in such a way that 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 preserves a property, that that, you know, the concert, that the um, Historical Society, Historical Commission, that the APDC, that we all can come to an agreement on this and see that there's only really one limited way forward. But certainly, you know, reasonable people disagree. I've said that several times, and I really do believe it. Reasonable people disagree. And and as we make decisions on what's in the best interest and needs of our community, I think that this just may very well be an area where reasonable people disagree.
Mr. Laxo, I know uh, Mr. McGrath asked for your opinion before, and I don't know if you were having internet issues or you weren't at your desk, but I will offer you the opportunity right now.
Well, I, I believe, of course, that the town has made mistakes in the past. Uh, has not kept the building in suitable condition for any sort of use. And we know what happens uh, over the years, without attention and so forth. And I think we've reached a point where our only alternative today is to uh, is to, as has been said many times this evening, to demolish it and and turn it into green space. Uh, and that very simply and briefly is my my opinion.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody who has not spoke, Mr. McGrath?
Um, I want to clarify that the APDC is not demanding that it be sold or saying that it must be so. We're not demanding anything. We're, we're presenting the position of the APDC as having that building in the district, that it's our job to look at that building and present our opinion to the select board. And that's what we're doing only. There's no demand, there's no must, and there's no holding of hostages. Um, and there's no emotion behind it on this point. Where we have a job that's specified in the, in the rules and regulations of the APDC, and that's what we're performing.
And I, and I, by the way.
We would be negligent in our job.
And I fully appreciate that, and I fully acknowledge that and do appreciate the work that you're doing in applying those. So I want to be clear about saying that. I I do not think that people are being intentionally obstructive. I want that to be clear. I think you are applying the bylaws that were given to you appropriately and as best as you can. I I want to say that with no doubt in my mind, that's what you're doing. Okay? Uh, I think that we're left at an impasse because the bylaws were passed and enacted by the people of town, and these are the same people. And enacted by the people of town, and these are the same people that now. Are creating their own impasse by not wanting to put money in to restore the building or to protect the building on one hand. They they've clearly said as a unit on more than one occasion, they don't want to sell the the land under the building. So what we are looking for, what I am looking for as Chair of the Select Board. And I think everybody on this call is looking for is a way to navigate tricky waters, to get something that's positive for the town on the other side. As I said at the beginning of this, our intention is to put in. An article for this town meeting to ask for money for the design. For a green space as I as I uh detailed in the beginning. We will be employing members of Monty Tech. Uh, at no cost to the town to come and help us. Visualize and and come up with a plan for that. That the town can vote on and then, once we have that design, hopefully in in the fall. To actually ask for the construction money for that design. That will require a submission by the board. Select Board of the demolition. Now. Is the Historical Commission. It still in charge or is it APDC because it's in the historical district? Who is in charge of the demolition delay permission that would be required? When the board puts in that request?
Yeah, the Architectural Preservation District Commission. All structures in the district. Are overseen by the Architectural Preservation District Commission. And the demo delay law was um. Was relayed to the commission uh upon the institution of the bylaws.
Why? Thank you for that clarification. I thought that was the case. I just wanted to clarify. So. I guess the request to the board is we are telegraphing. We are telling you well in advance what are what we are going to do. And I guess it's going to be in your court, what you decide with that request. Uh, at such time that we that we submit it, which. It'll be around town meeting. I don't know if it'll be before or directly after, but. The the article that will be before town meeting will be discussing this vision to do this. And we are here to say where we are. Not, we're not here because of the twelve video people I see in front of me on the screen, right? We're here because of decisions of prior boards. Of prior commissions and of town meetings. All have made decisions on their own behalf with the knowledge they had in front of them. We are just handed the situation as it stands. And we are looking to not pit people of the town against other people of the town. For whatever reason, we're looking for a way for a positive outcome for the town in the best way we see possible. Given the history, the recent history that we have been presented with. That is what my goal is, Mr. Mr. Cullen Dwyer. I have to say, by the way, just for the record. You two aren't related. I just want that to be known. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just so anybody who's looking for the first time, Colin and Todd are not related. Colin.
That we know of.
Yeah.
Uh. Uh, I I would like, I I I believe that um, just because the. The proposal of the Board of Selectmen is so. Uh, completely antithetical to the whole purpose of the APDC that our positions are still really pretty far apart. Uh, and in the interest of maybe. Closing some of that distance, I would like to point out that uh, there's nothing. Contrary to our mission to developing parking in the area, and it does seem like there that the land could be used to develop parking without the destruction of the building. Um, and so we certainly wouldn't object to that. And I'd also like to just bring up the possibility that the building could in some capacity be preserved and integrated with the green space. We talk about a farmer's market building or a place for like a band concert or something like that. I wonder if the building could be preserved. Maybe not as a um enclosed heated structure, but maybe as like an open air type of structure, just the the roof and the walls. Uh, sort of a shell building, but it would still be a roof to um provide shelter for community events or something like that. Um, I I don't know if that's feasible, but that's something that I think we would certainly uh consider. Uh, and I, we would have to discuss it, but I expect that we would approve a uh, an alteration of that sort. Um. But I I just, you know, because it's our mission to preserve these buildings. Uh, it would take quite a lot to convince us that it would be. The best way forward to demolish it, honestly.
I I would say, and 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 I'm not saying this in any in any threatening way, but I feel that will leave us because of what town hall. Town meeting has decided in the past. It's going to leave us at a stalemate and an impasse. That's what I feel it's going to leave us. Because the town has clearly spoken about other things, again, to to keep the building, as you said. Which personally, I'm not against, by the way. Uh, I would have to see it designed, but it's going to take. If the town continues to own it, that means the town is going to have to shore up the building. Probably with considerable funds to make it a structure that work. And I don't believe, and and we haven't seen the numbers because of the pandemic now, we haven't seen the economic numbers for the twenty twenty-two budget. But I'm going to guess they're not going to be pretty. Uh, it it's a little bit premature to say that. It's a projection. I want that to be clear that I'm just projecting what I think it's going to be. But I, if that is true. Then this town is certainly not going to put money into, again, rehabbing a building in any regard, to any level. That they feel is not going to give enough. Colloquially bang for the buck, right? I mean, that's what they're going to say. Uh, that's what I feel they're going to say, and I know there's going to be members of the community that are going to strongly stand up and say that, why are we putting X amount of money into this? It's not worth it, and then we're going to be at the same place. I'm trying to unlock a logjam that's been in place. Probably for two to three years now. And as 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 my role as Chair, my last year of my term. I would love to see the logjam broken where we get something that all of us. Potentially could be proud of in that area. I hear what you're saying, Colin. And again, on its face, I don't disagree, but the town meeting that approved the bylaws and the town meeting that votes for money. Are at. At odds with itself. And that's where I feel we are. Ms. Adams, I I would ask that you keep it brief.
Okay, I had something entirely new to say and add to the conversation.
That's good.
New is good. Negativity as always, but um, there's a little bit of historical context with the APDC. And the village district bylaws that I think is important to point out because the APDC was very important. Piece of the puzzle to the balance of the village district bylaws. If you go back to the village district bylaws when they are advocating for those to be passed, they could potentially damage town center. They were allowing for more density and changes that made people uncomfortable. And so the APDC in a in a good governmental sense is put there to balance. Too much change with some preservation. And so, um. You know, for that, I I appreciate. That it exists because then we wouldn't be having this conversation. These conversations should be had. And so we find ourselves on different sides of them. And I wasn't intending to use any redundancy, Chairman. I wanted to respond to Colin. In the sense that, yes, there is enough space for parking because essentially there already is. It's just not well laid out. There is enough space behind and around the building for recreation. I grew up with playing baseball there and recess running around the building. So we can achieve everything I talked about. With the building staying, it just becomes what is the purpose of the building? And who funds a building? And I love irony because one of the things that I would turn the building into is town hall. I would prefer town hall in that building versus the TC Passios building. I could see that leveled and that being a baseball field. We are currently studying a multimillion dollar renovation of the TC Passios building. To potentially be a town hall, which I think is a terrible idea. It puts too many people on school campus, et cetera. I've said it enough times over the years. We just heard the chairman say that the town wouldn't have the appetite for rehabbing a building, yet we are currently studying. The multimillion dollar rehab of a building. So then I would challenge the APDC, the Historical Commission, and anybody that loves that building because I believe in the preservation of the spot. For municipal use. If you look at the final price tag that's put on the TC Passios building to move town hall into that, I guarantee you. The town could preserve and turn uh that building into a town hall. Now, some people might say there's not enough space, and if you find the tape, which I believe was done in two thousand and fifteen. Um, there was actually a version of options which made that the town hall and put an addition on it. Now, when I used to blab about this years ago, I imagined a campus where you have the Historical Society. And the Ritter Building. And the old primary school. If the Ritter Building was land use. And the um, old primary building was a town hall, more of the town office buildings. And you had your Historical Society, and then all of the contiguous land was parking and or open space, you would create a town center campus. Get down, keep town hall out of the TC Passios building, keep that the school campus. I used to just, I practically would cry about it at meetings. Keep that a school campus, use this parcel in this vision to create a municipal campus. So if people love the building, the only use that I see for it is the town hall and the funding I see for is the monies that people be willing to spend on the TCP could be spent on that. That would be my suggestion in terms of, uh, I don't see any appetite for selling the land or the building. But we do need an improved town hall that's more ADA compliant, a little bit larger. And with its um land, with the exception of School Street, essentially a butts the Ritter Building. You could really make a municipal campus and it could be beautiful and stunning and something that all towns would be proud to have. So there's a little bit of a a can of worms to say, okay, look at what they're considering for TCP. Apply that money to that building and we'd actually save money in the long run. So there's a long-term vision that would preserve that building. And use the land, keep the parking and fund it, et cetera. Keep TCP. Uh, future school use, uh, so on and so forth. So there's a path to finding some common ground, um. And it's worth in these discussions because maybe someday that old primary school is a fabulous stunning town hall on a campus with band concerts. So there you go.
Hmm. Okay. Anybody else have anything to add to the conversation? So I I think, first of all, I want to thank everybody for taking the time tonight to be part of the conversation. I I value everybody's input and I value your time as individual members and. You know, people who are looking for the best interest of Lunenburg. I I think that we all have that in mind. Uh, I think we have different ideas about how to get there. And again, trying to avoid a continued impasse. That was been my. My objective from from the beginning in this. Uh, I don't, as far as another RFP. Hold on. As far as another RFP, I think that we can certainly investigate it to the extent of that it would satisfy the needs of the. Uh, of the APDC. I'm not against it. It doesn't really cost us money to do it. If you guys want to be involved in it, we can certainly see if there's any interest at all. But any interest that involves the sale of the property, I think the town has been very clear on two occasions that they will not do it. So. If they're going to rehab the building, it'll have to be some kind of lease or something, and I'm more than happy to investigate that. To satisfy that, you know, that requirement. But beyond that. I I don't know, you know, where we would go. We're gonna, we're gonna. I, as I said at the beginning, I think that saying that this is demolition by neglect is is an unfair statement because this this building. You could argue was in neglect before the APDC was even formed, so it's not like under your watch this happened. This happened well before that. I would also point out that we did make improvements to the building. The only thing we didn't do that was requested of the building. Uh, the APDC was the roof last year because the board voted. Uh, in a majority vote not to do the roof, but we did all the other uh improvements that were requested at the time. You know, but the building still, I, and our walk of October thirty-first, the building is still obviously deteriorating, so. It it's, you know, we're reaching, I I think Bill is correct. In saying that, you know, we made some bad decisions. Maybe you could say that. We shouldn't have kept it for five years going for the senior housing and that put us behind. But there are a lot of things that put us behind. In any way, looking back and trying to see where that happens will. Guide us hopefully in the future, but it doesn't change where we are now with the building. Uh, we will be putting in at some point for the demolition of the building. Uh, you you as a commission will act on that. As you see fit. Uh, I just hope we're not here next year doing the same thing again and asking the same thing of the same people, so. I hope we do find a way around this uh going forward, but if we need to start an RFP, Mr. Mr. McGrath, Mr. Dwyer, if you want to contact the town manager. And see what what you would like to see in it. The next, we will put it on our agenda to discuss it as a board beyond tonight. Uh, to put out an RFP for that building. But not as a purchase, just as a, a, at best a lease. We won't give up the land. I don't think the town wants to give up the land. So. I think we'll leave it at that. If anybody has anything left to say, I don't want to cut anybody off. I don't ever cut anybody off generally, so. I see no other hands raised. So again, I will thank everybody for the conversation. And uh, let's think long and hard about this and we'll go ahead with our town meeting warrant article. And uh. If the commission APDC can get get with us and what their requirements would be for what they would consider a valid. Not, I I'm not conceding that the last one wasn't valid, but if you would like to see another one that has certain contingencies that you'd like to see. I'd be more than happy to entertain those and have the board discuss them. Okay.
Uh, Architectural Preservation District Commission motion to adjourn. Uh, Brian.
I I agree as well, but during.
All in favor, Colin?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Anthony? Richard?
Anthony says, Anthony says I agree on chat.
Okay.
Historical Commission motion to adjourn, Bill?
Motion to adjourn, yes.
Hmm. Uh, um. That was seconded? Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Kevin?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Richard, aye. Historical Commission is adjourned.
Thank you very much. Good evening to those. Just before we adjourn our meeting, uh, upcoming meeting event, so on January nineteenth, we have the next uh, next Tuesday, we have the next. Uh, select board meeting, and then we have one on February second. Uh, the next one after that will be February second. It's gonna be a Groundhog Day. Uh. Select Board Meeting. Always interesting having something on Groundhog's Day, of course. Uh. And then, of course, February fourth is the Greenleaf Botanical Community Meeting that Town Manager. And Selectman Adams uh discussed in the beginning of the meeting, that will be happening. Uh, on Zoom, you can get all the information from the uh, public hearing postings in the ledger or on the town website. Do we have any final public comment from the public today? Seeing no hands raised. Do we have any public comment from the board this evening? Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, my, I not so much a public comment as much as it's more of an action item request. Uh, I think we, I think, I I think it would be helpful if at a future meeting. We look at the uh bylaw for the Architectural Preservation District. Um, I think there 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 may be a need to have a conversation of if it was the intent of the town in creating that bylaw. To given, given all the restrictions when it comes to. Town property as far as, you know, we need town permission to sell it, you need town permission to uh, to fund any changes on it, you know, you need town meeting for everything. Dealing with, for the most, for most things dealing with town property to see if if we should just have a discussion to see if there's a need to propose a change to. The APDC rules um, as it pertains to town property. Because I can't, I I see that there may be a conflict there, and I'm not sure if it was necessarily the intent of the town. Um. I question if it was the intent in creating the APDC rules. If if, you know, if if there was any thought about what, how that applies to a building that was already falling apart at the time. Like, you know, so I think there's just maybe some research that can be done between now and then, so I just request a future topic. Prior to the closing of the warrant.
Okay, we can try to put it on the. February second or February ninth meeting. Okay, we can try to put it on the February second or February ninth meeting. Come with ideas though. So it's okay to throw out a topic, but it would be good to come up with ideas too, what you would like to see done.
I have a comment.
Mr. Moreno?
Uh, just actually a question. I, I wonder if there's any CARES Act money or funding that whereby we could uh, help some of these, these people on these boards that don't have the correct technology to, to contribute uh, to these meetings. And this is very difficult as it is. And then to stay, sit here and stare at a blank screen with just a name on it, or somebody you can't talk to because their their audio doesn't work or something to that, I find uh, uh, makes, makes these meetings just extremely useless. Um, so that's my question. I don't know if there's some funding that we could, you know, like the school that they gave out some technology to the students. You know, is it possible to give out some technology to people on these boards in need? Because I don't, it's not fair to either one of us. I don't think, anyway. It's just an opinion and a question, I guess.
Madam Town Manager, do you have a response to that at all?
I could respond. Um, it's certainly something we can look into as far as um, devices, is that what I'm I'm hearing from your request, but as far as uh, um, learning tools as well, our remote meeting coordinator would be a good resource for any kind of technology um, learning piece for a Zoom and um, that we can tap into. So that's already a funded thing, but through the CARES Act, we could if there's a need for devices or something like that, we can look into that as well.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. If you need any help um, investigating that, I'd be willing to help you do that.
Thank you.
I would also say that, you know, we can help. Some, sometimes we don't know if it's the person and they're just not knowledgeable on how to use the technology they have. But some of the problem is, of course, just internet connectivity. Some, some people's internet is very bad and it doesn't matter what technology you put on until they get a stable and fine connection. I mean, I'm struggling tonight where I'm located. Uh, my, my, my internet keeps freezing at, you know, fifteen, twenty seconds at a time. I'm sure you've seen it. So, you know, it some people in town just don't, we don't have a lot of options, right? Either you have, either you have Verizon or you have Comcast and or you have, you know, your cellphone or something. I mean, some of them are just not good. And it is challenging, Jim. I agree with you. I mean,
I, I, you, you are fine tonight. I, I'm just, I'm looking at names.
Yep.
Um, and there's people I can't even talk. There's a, Tony was probably wanted to contribute something. He couldn't. You know, I don't know if that was internet or whatever, but maybe we can help him with that too. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great question.
He's a, he's a board member. I'm just, I think it's really important that they participate in, in, in a clear way. I feel like, I almost feel like this is a waste of time, to be honest with you.
Well, I, I would hope you wouldn't think that. I think there was some good discussion, but I understand where you're coming from. Somebody joined late on the phone. If you are that person at five eight two seven two four eight and you missed the public comment, I am opening it up for you in case you wanted to say something.
Thank you. Hello?
Yes, first identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Dave Rogers, eighty-two Highland Street. And I will be brief.
Thank you.
Um, I, I, I penned some notes uh, as I listened to this uh, discussion. Um, and my, my points are, uh, the analysis paralysis that we've gone through on this must end. The reason that developers, in my opinion, are not interested in the building is that it does not include the land, which is the most important part of this whole equation. I think the best interest of the town is clouded by a strict adherence to a very narrow APDC which lacks, in my opinion, common sense approach to the situation. When all else fails, common sense should prevail. I think that Mr. Laxo said it best, tear the building down. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Mr. Rogers. Okay, any other board comment? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Go have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Good night, everyone. Thanks, everybody for listening. Thanks for the discussion.